All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We are going to have our invocation this evening by Pastor Emeris Cummings of Kingdom Life Center. And as you come, Pastor, I'm going to ask you to pray for the Laxton family, the officers' family that we lost earlier, and for our Clayton County family, and especially the police department personnel. And the invocation will be followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by our honorary, our Veteran of the Month, Retired Master Gunnery Sergeant, Samuel Platt. Please stand with me.
Father, God, we humbly come to you now, surrendered, humbled, some hurting. But we want to take a moment, Father, to offer our repentance for things that we've done outside of your will. We want to take a moment, Father, to surrender our hearts, surrender our minds, and surrender our souls. Father, we take a moment to pray for the Laxton family, Father, they have lost a loved one. God, we thank you now for the strength that you're sending to the Clayton County Police Department in this time of loss. Father, we pray now for protection, protection as they continue to serve this community in excellence. Father, we pray now for every Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Warner, Chairman Turner, Commissioner Hambrik, and Commissioner Davis. Strengthen them, lead them, guide them, as they continue to serve the people for your purpose and for your cause. Father, we thank you now that unity will rest, that you will be glorified, and that you will be honored. Father, we pray now that you allow them to come together with new strategies, new methodologies to serve the people of Clayton County. And Father, we pray for the residents, the community, the constituents, to come and support as the leadership goes forth for each of us. And we thank you for what you are doing to protect us, to shield us, and to keep us during this time of loss, during the pandemic, and as we go through day to day. We appreciate you for angelic protection, angelic intervention, and your grace. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December the 7th, 2021 Board of Commissioners' Business Meeting. Our first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Any members of the board want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I'd like to, yes, I'll wait. Madam Clerk, can we take item four just separately, please, for a question?
Item number four?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item number four, request for second contract amendment, custodial services, annual contract, move to the regular agenda. Any others? All right, here are none. I will accept the motion to adopt the agenda.
Slow move.
Sarah Suckin?
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our first order of business is the Veteran of the Month.
All right, our Veteran of the Month is Master Gunnery Sergeant Samuel V. Platt. And if you haven't figured it out by now, that's that handsome young man over there with full regalia, looking top notch. Sergeant Platt was born December 22nd, 1950, in Waukegan, Illinois. He enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 1973. He attended military police school in Fort Gordon, Georgia, and then transferred to Fort McKellen, Alabama, for military police investigation and criminal investigation training. Later, he was sent to Fort Bragg, North Carolina, for anti-terrorism training. In 1994, he was at Marine Corps Air Station El Toro, California, where he was a training officer. There, he maintained department physical fitness standards for 400 military police personnel, instructed all annual small arms weapons qualifications, trained personnel in anti-terrorism, national defense security, and conducted hazardous material in first response training. Sergeant Platt is a certified customs inspector. Sergeant Platt became a lifeline security and services officer. He was the assistant coordinator to manage extensive coordination for annual air shows to ensure the safety and security of 1.5 million spectators and participants. He was responsible for the counseling, guidance, health, and welfare of 340 military police. He also participated in the state funeral for the Honorable Mr. Richard Nixon. Sergeant Platt was stationed at Perris Island in South Carolina in 1995. Here, he was the senior security officer and supervised 62 military police personnel. He was appointed the education officer responsible for education counseling and guidance to all members of the division. He served as a senior advisor to the Provost Marshal, successfully conducting security operations in support of the 1996 Olympic Games. While in the Marines, Sergeant Platt earned his Bachelor's of Science from the University of New York in political science, and his Master's of Arts from Webster University in human resources development and management. Sergeant Platt and his family moved to Clayton County in 1996. He finally retired in 2003 after 30 years from Perris Island. Now you can see Sergeant Platt working in his yard, landscaping or helping someone else with his or her yard because he loves it. However, his greatest love is sitting around with young men, talking with them, counseling, listening to their issues, or just giving them the pleasure of his experiences. Please help me congratulate and acknowledge Retired Master Gunnery Sergeant Samuel V. Platt.
Next, we will have proclamation, Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club.
Come on down. Come on Amelia. Come on Elias. Come on Elias, come on. Dr. Beasley is here as well for this proclamation, and Dr. Smith, I don't know if you made it in. Come on down. Congratulations.
So, this proclamation is given to our Clayton County Flint River Boys and Girls Club Center and honoring none other than Mr. Elias Dennis, whereas Amelia Davis, to my right, serves as the Executive Director of the Flint River Community Center, Boys and Girls Club of the Metro Atlanta area, which opened in Clayton County thanks to the board vote now on February 15th, 2021, with a mission to ignite the unlimited potential of kids and children by creating a safe, inclusive, and engaging environment here in Clayton County. Whereas Elias Dennis, to my left, was nominated by his club staff to represent the Flint River Community Center, Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta as its inaugural Youth of the Year candidate. He was one of 15 candidates, everybody, chosen from across the Metro Atlanta area to represent the Boys and Girls Club and all of Clayton County in the 2021 Youth of the Year Leadership Development Program. On November 12th, the Boys and Girls Club named Elias Dennis as the 2021 Youth of the Year runner-up. This prestigious accomplishment is awarded to the candidate who demonstrates exemplary academic achievement, leadership skills, and service to the community. Whereas Elias Dennis is a sophomore at Elite Scholars Academy in Jonesboro, Georgia, where he excels as a student and leader to his peers and his community. His accomplishments also include running his own lawn care business, you're paying taxes, and serving as a leader in the Nature's Kingdom member at Camp Kiwanis, where he achieved the Link of the Year Award upon graduation in 2024. He plans to study veterinarian medicine at the Tuskegee University. He then aspires to open his own practice of veterinarian clinics. Therefore, I, Commissioner Franklin, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, do hereby offer the warmest and most heartfelt congratulations to the 2021 Youth of the Year runner-up Elias Dennis of the Flint River Community Center, Boys and Girls Club of America. Y'all, give him a hand. And again, I want to make sure, especially even with our newest Commissioner coming on board, and that's why I brought up Dr. Beasley, this effort could not be done without all of the board making this happen, including our newest board member who was on the school board. It's because of our efforts working with the school board that we were able to have kids in that center come February on the first day, y'all. It brought a tear to my eye, and I want to introduce you to the amazing Ms. Amelia, right here.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin. Thank you for this honor, and thank you for helping us honor Elias, who is an exceptional leader here at our Flint River Club. We are so excited about his accomplishments. We're excited to be here in Flint River, and again, I want to thank the Commissioner and the Board of Commissioners for helping us and partnering with us to ignite unlimited potentials of our teens and our youth that we serve every single day at our Flint River Club. So again, thank you so much for having us, and thank you for honoring Elias.
And we didn't recognize Elias' mother. I know she looks like his sister, but this is his mom. And Elias says, you know, y'all have a great day.
100%. 100%.
So the question was, what's the graduation rate at Elite Scholars? 100%.
Y'all made that happen. Ms. Board, Sarah Districts.
Next, we will have a presentation by Dr. Morice Beasley, Superintendent of the Clayton
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you all for this opportunity. Chairman Turner, to all of the Commissioners, to, I see my former boss over here, congratulations. It's just good to be in our community tonight, isn't it? So I'd like to share, I know you all appreciate brevity, so I won't be before you long, but I just wanted to share a few things about the school system as we bring a close in a few weeks, a few days really, to the end of our first semester of this school year. As you all know, we started school on August 2nd with about 53,000 students. We started face-to-face. In the first six, six or so weeks of school, we had to move about 19 schools to some amount of virtual learning, whether a day, a week, two weeks. But since then, all of our schools have been face-to-face. We do have about 8,500 students whose parents have chosen that they would learn virtually. So throughout our, that's about 16% of our population, student enrollment. So on any given day, we have about, again, 8,500 students who are learning virtually, but most of our students are face-to-face. You know, we have a mask mandate, and our students really support the mask mandate because, as I heard one substitute share, that the student shared with her, they want to be safe, and they want their families to be safe, and they don't want to go back home. They want to be in school. So you should know that we have been encouraging the vaccine in our school system, and we make no apologies for it. We are vaccinated as a school system, our employees that would be, at a rate of 73%. 73%. We continue to support the county-wide efforts. We are very grateful for the Clayton County Board of Health, Health District, and we'll continue to vaccinate as many individuals that are willing to be vaccinated, starting at the age of five and higher, if they're eligible to be vaccinated. We continue to offer the vaccine at all of our schools, and honestly, you don't even have to have an appointment. It's part of our standard operating procedure now to just vaccinate those who need to be vaccinated. So we believe that we're helping our county continue to inch upward in its vaccination rate. Chairman Turner, Mr. Davis, you mentioned Elite Scholars has a grad rate of 100%. I don't know if you all knew this, recently Elite Scholars was renamed a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, and so they were awarded at a ceremony in Washington, D.C. that many of us participated in virtually. That's after Stillwell School of the Arts was also named last year a National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence. So we have two schools in two consecutive years that have been named National Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence. We also have the Elite Scholars 6 through 8. They were named the number-one middle school in the state of Georgia, number-one in the state of Georgia. You all should know that our grad rate is still at 76%. It took about six tenths of a dip from the previous year, which we thought it would take a larger dip, but it didn't, so we were pleased in light of the pandemic. But we have 11 high schools, and I want you to hear this, out of the 11 traditional high schools, two of those high schools have a grad rate of 100%, Elite Scholars and Stillwell. The other high schools, except two, are in the 80 range, getting close to 90% range. So all of our schools are moving, and the two schools that are in the 70 range, they are 75, about 75% and inching upward. North Clayton High School is the most recent school to join what we call the 80 Club, but the goal is, once you get to 80, you got to move to 90%. So I want you to know that the grad rate is improving in our district. We continue to work on literacy. As you well know, our work here in Clayton County is to get more and most, if not all of our students, reading on or above grade level. That continues to be our work. Now, the pandemic clearly has provided some challenges in that learning opportunities were somewhat compromised during virtual learning because you don't learn as much virtually. You don't spend as much time with the teacher virtually as you do face-to-face. So we are in the process this year of, I don't use the term recovering learning loss because I don't think they lost, I think we're recovering learning opportunities. So we are approaching opportunities before school, during the school day, after school, weekends, et cetera, and encouraging our families, parents, students to take full advantage of the opportunities that we have. We are continuing with our Advanced Learning for All initiative, where we are improving the number of students who are enrolled in advanced placement, dual enrollment. We are offering accelerated math to all sixth graders with the expectation that they complete high school algebra in the eighth grade. And now, we have more students in the eighth grade completing high school credit courses than we've ever had in the history of the district. So we know we're going in the right direction. Our students are graduating, going to some of the top universities, including right here in Clayton County, Clayton State University. As you well know, many of the students at Clayton State University come from Clayton County public schools. We are working on social-emotional learning. As you well know, we have had a student suicide this semester. We've had really more than one attempt, and we are encouraging our parents, please find, if you have weapons in your home, please secure the weapons. Our students should not get access to the weapons we as parents have purchased in our homes. We have to do our part to secure the weapons. But beyond securing the weapons, we're encouraging parents, talk to our children, see what's on their mind, and take full advantage of all the resources that we're offering to help our students. Sometimes just talk it out, talk through it. We know that life is tough during the pandemic, and it was tough prior to the pandemic. It's not any easier in the pandemic, but we have many resources that we'd like students and families to take advantage of in our school system. I wish I could say that all we were focused on was teaching little Johnny how to read, but that's not what we do as a school system. We work with all of the entities, all the government, all the cities, all the agencies to ensure that not only can our students read and write, graduate from high school, but to ensure that they have access to internships, opportunities, resources, if they're homeless, et cetera, families can pay rent, so they're not necessarily put out on the street, so the students can have what we would call continuity of learning. We don't want their learning disrupted. So we appreciate all that you all have done. As you well know, our firefighter program would not be a success without Chief Murkison and all of you all's support. It would not continue to thrive. We are considering moving it to our new College and Career Academy. As you know, we purchased the Sears building in the Morrow area at the South Lake Mall area, and not only will that have almost 9,000-seat arena, but we're looking at locating the College and Career Academy at that location, centralizing the firefighter program so students can be served from all high schools and not just a few high schools that are currently being served. More to come about the College and Career Academy as we move forward with plans, but I just want you all to know that the school system is continuing to make progress. We're addressing our challenges. We make no apology that our work is about improving our school system. We highlight our successes, we acknowledge our challenges, but we don't get stuck on our challenges. We make sure that people understand that our school system is moving in the right direction. We are well represented and well-spoken of in this county and throughout our Metro Atlanta area and throughout this state, and we should be very proud of that. Our Board of Education continues to set the bar high. They have been rated by GSBA as an exemplary board, again, for the fifth year in a row, and so we commend our Board of Education, led by our Board Chair, Ms. Goree, and Vice Chair, Mr. Ben Straker. So we just want all of you to know, our ears are open. If there's anything that you all need, anything that you need us to work on, you all know we are here to work on those things because we are one community, and we're working with all of you to ensure that our students have access to the best educational experience. I like to say, a private school experience on the public's dime. Thank you all. I'll pause if there are any questions for me.
Thank you for your presentation and update, Dr. Beasley. I really appreciate all that you're doing for our children because they are, are all our children as a community, and it takes all of us to look out for their best interest to make sure that when our children are doing well, we as a county will do well. And I particularly like the point that you made about the healthcare. Healthcare issues are real.
Yes, sir.
And some people may not think that a small child or a young person would have health or mental health issues, but it's real and exists. So please, let's all stay vigilant and pay attention to our children and our neighbors' children and everybody else's children because that could mean the difference between somebody's life.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hambrik.
Yes, Mr. Beasley, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I hope everybody heard that and will, you know, take that in that Clayton County schools are doing well. Thank you. The aviation program, are we still doing that, or at what stage?
Great you mentioned that. Today, we met about the aviation program, so you should know, we have two aviation programs, one at North Clayton High School, they focus on aviation flight and drones, and one at Morrow High School. And so we were talking about Morrow's program as we get ready to go into the new facility. So they also have aviation flight, and we're looking at, in the new College and Career Academy, placing aviation tech op, or what we call mechanical aviation in that facility for those who don't necessarily want to fly, but they want to maybe be a mechanic, work on planes, et cetera. So we're also, of course, we have many other pathways in which students can prepare for the many careers that are in aviation. So more to come. You'll see, you should see at the new Morrow High School, we're even going to have a plane out in front of the school, so. But that is one of the vibrant aviation programs, and as we build the College and Career Academy adjacent to the arena, you will see an expanded program there that will serve all the students in the county here in Clayton.
Okay. And now, I believe at one point we were talking about- Okay. And now, I believe at one point we were talking about a police training program similar to the.
Public safety, that is correct. So that will also be a program at the new College and Career Academy. So we, we want, and we want to encourage everyone, just like we encourage students to become firefighters in this county, we want to encourage them to work in, to become police officers as well. So that's an area that we are working on. And, uh, there are some efforts to see if we can get students to become, I guess, uh, nine-one-one operators.
Yes.
So that's an, an ongoing effort as well. We, I do think we need to make some more progress, but I know the pandemic is, you know, has slowed us down a little bit. But I think we're at a point now that we should be able to make some movement with some of these, uh, more addition, additional programs. And you should, I should share, logistics and transportation will also be a program at the new College and Career Academy. And hopefully, we can seize upon the opportunity with Amazon in our county and some other major companies that need, uh, drivers and workers and managers, et cetera, take full advantage of those partnerships and, and really plug them into our students right here in Clayton County.
Do we have a date on that academy?
The academy, well, you know, it goes along with the Sears building. So we're estimating there, it's in design right now, and it may take about three to four months for design. We're estimating between eighteen and twenty-two months to complete the project. So I would say about two years, if we give it about April, about two years from April.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Beasley?
Hi there.
First, I want to say thank you all for educating my four children. I'm on my last set of the Old Testament, the New Testament, rather, getting them through school, the twins. And I also want to thank you once again for working with the community constantly, which is why we're seeing such successes. And, um, additionally, when you were talking about the law enforcement program, it's definitely key to note that Officer Laxton matriculated through the Clayton County Public School Systems from, uh, system from, uh, even elementary school and even some of our other officers here that I won't name that are even in the room. So that's key, and that's, um, key for sustainability for our community. There are a couple of things that I do want us to work on in the future, not saying that we can address them here right now. But you already know, I'm just gonna put a pin in it, you know how I feel about dual enrollment? And how dual enrollment with the state expansion and then the embracing of it through our school system will allow us to be able to increase our college graduation rate in a county where we see that people are working and not making as much as those, uh, in other areas. So to help our kids to be able to graduate sooner and save our, um, our citizens money. So I want to continue that. The other thing, though, I would like for this board to consider, and I, I spoke with actually Commissioner Hamrick about it, with our homeless students, is connecting you all to our process of identifying programs to fund. Because I've worked with Ms. Sonya Davis for years, and there's a disconnect between us and the school system. I know we passed something with a new facility, with housing, but we've got to come together even on identifying funding. So we're not using the same CARES Act funding and ARPA funding for the same programs that are putting in the same applications or servicing the same students but getting money twice. And we need to make sure that the kids are being served. Because, um, Ms. Davis did share with me, there's still a great need out there and the needs just aren't being met. Um, and I think that was it for me. Uh, I think that's it for now.
Thank you, thank you. And we'll, we continue to work on dual enrollment. You know, the state did have some restrictions put in place relative to who can participate in dual enrollment. But we, we have some workarounds around that, if you will. So we are working to ensure that our students here in Clayton County have access to those programs. Especially if they want to go to college, and many of our students do want to go to college. And we want them to go to college with a leg up, with an advantage. Relative to homelessness and the, uh, funding, Sonya and I, we have discussed that. So whatever ideas you have to help close the gap, we would, let us know if there are some meetings that we need to attend as you all are looking at your various applications and funding. So we can kind of compare what we have, what we have access to, and then maybe fill in the gap or figure out where the gap is.
That would be great.
Then we'll be able to address that.
Great. And I do have, did have one more, um, because there's a school in particular that I received a lot of calls on. We were so proud of the school, of the Michelle Obama School, but it was open without a turn lane. And it was communicated to us that the board was not in support of getting the turn lane. We gotta be together on that because the community calls us on things like that, and that item did not come before the board. But I think that definitely can be shared up through communications. So as you're building out your schools, let's make sure that Clayton County is at that table with transportation and development so that all funding is there for not just building the school, but building the infrastructure so you don't have a bus depot and a school on a two-lane road.
We'll work on that. I, I wasn't aware about the turn light situation, but we'll work with the governmental relations team to see what we can do to address that. And Ronna, of course, our, uh, SPOS director, to see what we can do to, to address that. We do know that the road expansion was going to happen after we moved into the school. So I'm hopeful that that's a part of that work that needs to yet be done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Beasley, just, I want to publicly say thank you for all you've done in this community. You have many challenges, but you have many accomplishments here that we're all proud of. So we just want to thank you, the Board of Education, uh, as well as Dr. Leica Anderson, who had a, a strong hand in, in turning our schools around. So we want to publicly thank you for that. One question I do have is on, with the evolution of technology. What type of certifications or programs are you beginning to engage with as far as certifications for anything in cyber? As far as fiber optics, networking support, things of that nature?
Well, I'll mention a few. Uh, one in particular, at Riverdale High School, we have a networking systems program there with DeVry University. And students can complete an associate degree in networking systems, uh, as they complete their high school diplomas. That's one. Also, in the state, uh, all of our middle schools will be required to offer computer science in the next year or so. So we are preparing to ensure that all students, uh, that are interested have access, at least at the middle school level, to computer science. And then you know, at Lovejoy High School, they have a computer science magnet there. Uh, we are working towards STEM certification in all of our schools. We have some schools that are closer to STEM certification than others. But within the next five years, we expect to have all schools either STEM-certified as a school or a program, or at a minimum, meeting certain expectations relative to what should be occurring instructionally if they are focused on STEM. So that's work in progress. And we have hired our new Innovation Director, Trina Reeves. And I would love to connect you with her so she can share with you all the innovative ideas that schools are implementing relative to STEM. I just named a few. We wanted to put artificial intelligence at the College and Career Academy because that could serve all the students in the county. I'll tell you, one of the challenges that we're having, of course, we surveyed students. And this is where we as adults have got to prod students in the right direction. Sometimes what the students are interested in aren't, aren't necessarily the careers that the demand exists in. So, uh, we've got to balance that. In other words, we can't go totally with what kids are interested in because if we did that in five to ten years when they graduate, then they wouldn't be employable. They wouldn't have the skills needed. But at the same time, we've got to show them that we have programs that they're, they are interested in as well. So we don't build a space or a program and not have students participating in the program. So that's just some internal work that we've got to continue to do in our school system. If you have ideas about specific programs, uh, that come to mind, just let us know. Just let us know. But our kids here in Clayton County, and you, you all should know this, one thing that we do across the board in all content areas, we focus on those STEM skills, criticality, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. Now, clearly, some classrooms are more progressive than others. But it's the expectation that all of our classrooms are moving to higher degrees of creativity, collaboration, communication, and criticality. And we are measuring that across the board. So we should see more, uh, more of that as we move more schools toward that STEM, along that STEM continuum.
And it's, it's good you, you asked about ideas because I've met with Atlanta Metropolitan College today. And they specifically called me to talk about that. So it's, I'm glad you were here tonight. But also too, I also want to let you know, you also have another student in the health medicine that's graduating from Harry this year as a dentist.
Excellent.
So that's something you need to be proud of as well.
Excellent, excellent. And tell them to come to Clayton County. We need Dennis right here in Clayton County, right?
The last one did.
Excellent.
She is here now.
Well, congratulations.
Anyone else?
And I'll close. That's out. Dr. Beasley, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I have seen the great work that we're doing in Clayton County, and, um, I challenge myself to go to, um, a great school within our county. And, um, I just want to say, the things that we're doing with our little ones are, it, it's just phenomenal. Our babies are doing phonics. They have iReady, they have map, they have Fanta's Empenel, they have guided reading. And our teachers are doing a phenomenal job with all of those resources. We have so many resources in Clayton County, public schools, everyone, that our kids can't go wrong. Um, they, I hear our babies reading every day. Babies who came in at the beginning of the school year who didn't know A from B, they are now reading, they are now sitting with their teachers, and those teachers are reading with them every day, going over the ELA, going over the phonics. So I just want to commend you all for what you have done to take that initiative on to make sure that the babies in Clayton County are reading. So, because if they can't read, they can't do math. They can't do science, they can't do social studies, and they definitely can't, you know, do any of the subject areas. So again, thank you for the, all that you all have done for our smaller kids, our parents having babies. You all are providing books for them, and I know a lot of people probably don't know that, but we are actually giving books to stu, to, um, mothers who are having babies at the hospital now. So we're making sure that everyone is reading. Um, and so again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And, um, just keep focusing. Um, as you all, one thing I want you all to also focus on are those hard-to-service or hard-to, um, field areas. Um, kind of working with those companies and things of that nature, whether it's a data analyst or a financial advisor, and bringing those companies in to Clayton County Public Schools and working with them so we can help fill those positions as well.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And I'll just share that you mentioned early learning. I want all of you to know and the community to know, we do not have a waiting list for pre-K in, in Clayton County any longer. If there's a family who has a child who can come to pre-K, they can come to our pre-K. We are, our board has decided that we will fund pre-K above, beyond what the state provides. So we do need everyone to help us get the word out. Because for years, people thought that there was a lottery. But now, everyone who lives in our county, who's eligible to attend pre-K, can attend pre-K. So work to do for all of us, get the word out. We will be doing a massive mailing to every residence in this county this year to let everyone know that, uh, pre-K is free in Clayton County. When I say free, that means your tax dollars are paying for pre-K right here in Clayton County. And you all should know that a part of the, the SPOS work that we're doing, you will see about five, I want to say up to five, early learning centers positioned throughout the county. These will be K-two, possibly K-three, or pre-K through third-grade centers. Nothing but focusing on early learning. We will have brain-based activities there. We'll have primary care physicians, dentists there, a one-stop shop, wraparound support for our families. And we believe when our families start seeing these centers throughout our county, that will also send a message that early learning is very, very important. And as you all know, and you should know, most of the gap that we see in achievement is because many of our kids don't come to pre-K. If we could get our kids in pre-K in Clayton County, we will be one of the highest-performing districts in this state and in this nation. So our work as a, as a county collectively, we are offering it now. So we've gotten rid of the access issue. Now we've got to get people interested, families interested in taking advantage of the seats that we're offering in our early learning, uh, spaces that we are currently have, that we currently have and that we are creating throughout our county. So thank you.
It's a lot of exciting information you've shared with us, and thank you, your staff and your employees for all that you're doing for, in our community.
Thank you. And I want to recognize we have our Chief of Communications, Jada, uh, she may have left, but I think, oh, there she is. Jada Dawkins. I want to acknowledge her for making sure we have these opportunities. So thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language while addressing the board.
And as Ms. Harrison is coming, I guess she knew she was number one on the list because she's halfway up here. I would just like to make some, uh, recognition or some acknowledgements myself. Uh, Jonesboro City Councilwoman, Danya Sator is on the back right, and I think that's her back there, yes. On the right-hand side, and then from Morrow City Council, we have City Councilwoman Dorothy Dean and Renee Knight. Thank you, all of you for being here this evening.
Give them a round of applause, please. Ms. Harrison?
Yes. Hi, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I stand before you.
State your name again.
Brenda Harrison, unincorporated Clayton County. And the segue is perfect because I'm coming behind the superintendent, but I'm speaking about the library system. We are strongly partner with the school system. And as the word he used, free. Our services are free to our citizens. So what I want to do is make the citizens aware of the computer and technology classes that we have. I serve as the Secretary of the Clayton County Board of Trustees. I just want to take a few minutes to inform the citizens about the computer technology classes offered by the library. Our wide variety of computer and technology classes at the library are designed to meet your needs and to help you get familiar with computers, learn a new program, or enhance your skills through hands-on experience and expert instructions. And forgive my voice because I'm so passionate about this subject, um, let me woo-sah. Our introduction to computer classes is ideal for individuals with little or no experience with computers. In this class, citizens, young and old, will learn about the basic parts of a computer, practice using the mouse, open programs, and work with multiple program windows. Learn how to sign up to use the libraries, public, computers, and more. And as I said, free. We also offer the Microsoft Office Series and the Google Application Suite, both virtually and in person. They are free sessions designed to help you learn and understand the basics of working with Microsoft Office applications such as Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and Publisher. Please note that these are not certification classes. They're strictly for learning and education. Classes are open to any and all residents of Georgia in person by signing up online or at one of our branches and virtually via the library YouTube channel. The library is striving to keep its citizens and staff safe amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And as such, many in-person computer courses are now delivered virtually. The in-person courses are by registration only and vary from branch to branch. Visit our website and online calendar to register for in-person courses or contact the local branch for assistance. The Morrow Branch has returned to offering one-on-one tech help, in-person sessions. One-on-one tech help is an appointment-only service for patrons who are in need of personalized assistance with basic tech needs.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but your time's up.
Thank you so much for your time, guys.
Thank you for the affirmation. And as you said, it's free.
It's free.
Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Chairman Turner, the home-going, home-going celebration for Officer Laxton was very well done. The proclamation was a nice touch, and the words of Chief Roberts was on point when he said, "The officer looked like Troy Palamale." But what got me was the video of his life and the songs, "The Eye of the Tiger" and P. Diddy's remake of "I'll Be Missing You." I recently attended several Commissioners Town Hall meetings, and the most important concern was safety. The Commissioners were very supportive of our first responders. But the problem is, the police chief and the fire chief are caught between a rock and a hard place. They have equipment, manpower, and salary issues that must be addressed immediately. Our first responders are stretched to the limit, but they're still doing a good job. The board needs to get past trying to be competitive to being attractive so people. job. The board needs to get past trying to be competitive to being attractive, so people want to come to work for the county. This is a win-win, because people will feel safer, and it's good for business. If at least two Commissioners and the Chairman are in favor of supporting the first responders, what is the delay? Show them, in the words of Officer Laxton, "I got your back." How does this board pass a code of conduct, then one month later, want to discuss parliamentary procedure and Roberts' Rules of Order? That is backwards and a waste of time, because we all know, they won't abide by it anyway. At the November 16th Zone Boarding, zoning board meeting, did a GK actually want people to get a permit to replace an existing fence? This along with a tax assessor who can't explain why our property taxes increased. That is a rip-off. Thank you.
Thank you. As you're leaving, thank you for being at the home-going service this, this morning. It meant a lot for the officers, as well as myself, to see you there in support of them, and of this, and of this community. So, thank you.
What I appreciated was the turnout. There were hardly any empty seats, and there were a lot of different police-
Agencies.
Agencies, supporting. It just goes to show, the nonsense that you hear, we love our officers, but we have to support them. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mickey Garber. Your time is ticking. Speak fast. About to leave, about to lose it.
That's all right. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Today is a day of remembrance, in more ways than one. First, my condolences to the immediate family of the fallen Police Officer Laxton, and my condolence to his police family and fire family, who protect me and my family and neighbors every day. Remembrance of those who perished December 7th, '41, and all those who perished to the end of 1945. Remember to all those who have perished in all wars before '45, and all those who have perished after 1945, and in all wars in our future. For without those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, I could not have the sharp and critical tongue I have. A correction there. I was born with my critical tongue. For without those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, I could not use my critical tongue. In closing, I would like to say, Merry Christmas to all, peace on earth, and goodwill toward men, Happy New Year, good health to all, and who I consider family in Clayton County who reside here with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes-
I told you, Mr. President.
Yeah, you did. That concludes public comment.
The board would now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, the motion was made by Commissioner Hambrick. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions on any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The first item is item number four, request for Second Contract Amendment, ITV 20-118, Custodian Services Annual Contract for Clayton County.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Once again, this is a request for the Second Contract Amendment, ITV number is 20-118. This is a custodial service, this is the annual contract. The request from Central Services is to amend the current contract with American Facility Services, Inc., which is located in Alpharetta, Georgia. We are wanting to add cleaning services for the probate court, in the amount of $625 per visit, and fogging services in the amount of $75 per visit. Funding is available for the services through the Probate Court's American Rescue Plan Act Fund. The Department Recommendation Memo and the amendment are attached for your review and information. My request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion? Commissioner Davis made motion. All right, I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I pulled it simply because of this. I've been approached by several folks within our communities, our community, that provide services such as within this contract, and I'm always talking about sustainability for our community. And, and it just would be nice if we could see somebody local to have this contract, especially when it comes to this type of services that are rendered. To have somebody come, a company from Alpharetta, providing a service that we know we have companies here that can provide, I just really would like to take a look at that. I know you all doing an amazing job, but I've had a couple of companies tell me that they've not been able to get into certain places where they had technical difficulties, and I just wanted to make sure we're putting the focus on getting local people, especially for this ARPA funding. No need to send it out of our county.
Right, and that's a great point. What we do are, we're committed to the competitive process, so we certainly send that out. Part of our, what we do, our process is the workshops. We, a lot of times, focus on Clayton County, but we also focus on looking at forecasting. So, if we know that we're going to have a project that will require this type of service, we will look at our vendor database, and we will go through that, and we will contact those companies to see if they can attend the process, you know, the programs. A lot of times, some of the challenge is, how do I do a bid? How do I do a proposal? And part of that is doing the workshop. So, we encourage all our local vendors, I know you and other Commissioners, as well as the Chairman, send vendors to us to make sure that they know the process. So, we certainly will continue to do that.
Right, and then one other quick question. How does this pay out, that we're paying a contract for compared to what we're already paying those who are on our payroll to do the same type of services in other buildings?
Now, I'm not sure about that. You know, I know building maintenance director Hopkins may speak to that, because these are, as you stated, under contracted terms.
Got it.
Good evening, Board. Commissioner Franklin, to your point, NX-3 is serviced by refuse control. So, there are custodians on staff, and there are also inmates. One of the terms that came into our nomenclature back about a year and a half ago, whenever we came back from the COVID shutdown, is enhanced cleaning techniques. So, refuse control continues to do the primary cleaning of the building. This specific item is for enhanced cleaning that they'll do after the court gets out every day.
Okay, and we could talk about it later, but even with the enhanced, I just want to see what the compare rate was, but we'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay for me on the-
All right, four one, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number 34.
Good evening.
Resolution 2021-260.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know you were going to speak. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my Vice Chair and Board, Resolution, Resolution 2021-260, which is Resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Clayton County Public Schools and Math Talk, to utilize space within South Clayton Recreation Center, Virginia Gray Recreation Center, International Park, to collaborate on the development of a student-led plan, to bring Math Talk and installations and technology to Clayton County neighborhoods and communities, to grant a special facility use request to Clayton County Public Schools to fulfill the purpose of the memorandum of understanding, to authorize the Chairman to execute any documents, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next item is item number 35, Resolution 2021-266.
Yes, Resolution 2021-266 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to conduct an independent review of the circumstances surrounding the Clayton County Housing Authority's rehabilitation of 732 Main Street, Forest Park, Georgia, to authorize the Chairman to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All right, probably moved in second. Are there any questions? I'm going to start by saying that I'm not opposed to the audit, but there have been some serious allegations that goes beyond just the scope of the rehabilitation of Main Street. I would like to see, actually, the scope enlarged, as well as a outside entity to conduct the internal audit. I would have loved to see that, as opposed to our internal audit. Yes, Commissioner-
I was just going to say, I think this is a good start to that.
But that was my statement on that. Was there any other comments, statements, questions?
Question?
Questions.
So, if we started with just that, will we have to come back before the Board to authorize, would that be a separate, another separate audit, additional audit, or even expansion of this?
This resolution actually requests that when the findings of the independent audit are completed, that they will turn that report over to the Board for your review and recommendations of any additional actions that come as a result of the findings of that audit. So, it could spur additional inquiries, another deeper dive into certain areas, depending on what the audit finds, but again, that will kind of be dictated by what the findings of the independent audit, of the internal audit are.
Would it be of a more beneficial use of our time, as well as our dollars, to conduct that audit over a period of time, or, or scope of work, larger scope of work, rather than just one specific incident? Does this specific incident need to be investigated? The answer is yes, but if we've had complaints throughout, why would we not embed those in a larger scope?
And then the question he asked earlier was, would we have to bring it back before the Board every time to piecemeal it?
Not, not necessarily, not the way that the, the resolution is written. I liken it to perhaps maybe unraveling a ball of string. You could certainly do that a number of different ways. You could get a large scissors and cut it in half, or you can start pulling and see where it ends. It's up to the Board of which way they decide they want to do it. You could have something much more in-depth on the outset, where you can start at the beginning, see where that unfolds, and then dictate where you go from that. But that's up to the Board of how you want to pursue it.
Or can we, even in Chairman, I'm more or less ask his question, can we table this to a work session, to begin to really discuss, and begin to really discuss the scope of what we're of an audit?
This, yes. If you're asking whether this matter can be moved to a work session, yes, you all have given yourselves the authority to move items from a regular agenda to a work session for discussion, and then you can bring it back to a regular meeting at another time, if that is the pleasure of the Board.
May I say something?
Yes.
A couple meetings ago, we had on the agenda an audit, which I believe was requested by you.
Yes, ma'am.
And whatever this comes, it will only cover, what is it, 2020 and 2021, I believe, because that Board does an audit each year. So, this is only covering the period that an audit has not been done, and because of the alleged, I guess you can call it, things that are happening. So, I think we should just go ahead. I mean, if we want to do this, let's do it. And if something comes from it, it does. If it doesn't, then it doesn't. But it'd be less expensive for the Board to do it this way than, what do you call it, forensic, bringing somebody in. I believe in saving the taxpayers' dollars. So, if we have something internal, and we do have an internal audit division, let's go ahead and do this, and get it over with. Stop prolonging.
I guess my comment would be, then that more or less sounds like an investigation, not an audit.
Well, some criminal charges could arise out of it, if-
That's why you do audits.
If it leads to it. And that's even more reason to be more transparent and have a third-party auditing firm to do it. But, again, that would be my concerns, fully in line with an audit, and making sure that we are good stewards and guards of the taxpayers' money. But at the same time, we need to uncover if there is any type of illegal activity or any irregularities that is not acceptable to this Board, and especially to the citizens of Clayton County.
Which is a good start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other comments? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Those opposed, aye. It's four one, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
All right, first board appointment is to the tax assessors. Mr. Ronald Baker's term expires December 31st, 2021. On the tax assessors' board, new term will begin December 31st, 2021, expire December 31st, 2024. It's an at-large appointment. Are there any recommendations? Any recommendations?
Can we save this for the next-
Yep, Madam Clerk, put this on the next board agenda. Next board appointment, board appointment is of the Board of Appeals for Van Shires. His term will expire December 31st, 2021. New term will begin December 31st, 2021, expire December 31st, 2024. Commissioner Anderson, selection.
I was going to see, if, if Quinn would like to do it, but can I just, can I hold?
You want to hold it till next-
Yeah, I was going to ask Ms. How, Ms. Quinn, would she do it, but she's here tonight.
Either, either hold it till next term, or-
You want me to hold it? Okay, all right, yeah, hold it.
All right, hold it till next meeting, Madam Clerk. Next appointment is to Board of Health, Dr. L. Adams. Term will expire December 31st, 2021. New term begin December 31st, 2021, and will expire December 31st, 2027. This is an at-large appointment, and I will move to reappoint Dr. Adams.
I will second it.
Probably move second, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
You skipped, um-
Did I skip one?
Thirty-eight.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you for that. Next board appointment is to the Board of Appeals. Ms. Gloria McCain appointment will expire December 31st, 2021. New term will begin December 31st, 2021, expire December 31st, 2024. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Gloria McCain.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is to Housing Authority. This appointment is to fill the non-expire term of Michael Bryant, who was removed from the Housing Authority by the Board of Commissioners. New term will begin immediately and will expire May 11th of 2025. Commissioner Davis.
I move that we appoint Mr. Robert Payne to the Housing Authority Board.
I will second that motion, those in favor, aye.
I couldn't understand the name.
Robert Payne.
Robert Payne.
P-A-Y-N-E.
Second the motion, those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Airport CID, Community Improvement District. Per Commissioner Hambrick, Mr. Michael Godin has resigned from the Airport South Community Improvement District Board. The new appointment will begin immediately and continue to serve at the pleasure of the Appointing Authority. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to appoint Mr. Grant Walker Jr.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, on litigation- Yes, Mr. Chair on Litigation, Personnel, and Real Estate.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for real estate personnel and litigation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Everybody have a good night and be safe. All right, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and if you didn't hear, Madam Clerk, that was Commissioner Hambrick made the motion. We're going to take Ms. Ambles first.
On behalf of the office of the district attorney, Human Resources is requesting step increases for the following employees, and I am going to provide the employees' names to put this on record. The first step increase is for Precious Marsh. We are requesting a step increase to 31, step 31, I mean, I'm sorry, grades, 31, step 10. The total cost of the request would be $3,056. The next one is Kelsey Miller. We're requesting grade 31, step 16. The cost for that would be $36.67. Next one is Cory Mitchell. We're requesting grade 32, step 10. For Cory, the cost would be $41.21. Ashley Warmack, we're requesting 31.11. The cost for that would be $30.56. And last, we're requesting Jamal Williams, 31.12, and the cost for that would be $30.56. And this gives us a total cost of the request for $16,956, and funding is available in the district attorney's budget to absorb the cost.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'm so moved.
Second.
I second.
Let me ask first, Commissioner Davis. All right, Commissioner Hambrick made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, which one? Commissioner Anderson, second the motion. Any questions? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
And the last one we have, on behalf of Transportation and Development, we're also requesting a step increase for Mr. Dean Trevi. We are requesting an increase of, if you all bear with me one second, make sure I got my notes, and I apologize, I left my glasses in the car. I do that a lot. We are requesting a step increase of 22.19 for Mr. Trevi, and the total cost of that And once again, that's grade 22, step 19.
Is there a motion?
So moved. I second it.
Again, can we wait till I ask for a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I've got two matters, if you want to take them together.
Please take them together.
Okay. First is settlement agreement, Benita, related to Benita Skillman. It's an accident that occurred on or about October 12, 2019, at the adder near the intersection of Garden Walk Boulevard, Highway 85, and that is resolving all claims against the county, the Fire and Emergency Services in Sierra Toponts, and that's in the amount of $47,500. And the next is a resolution of two condemnation matters, one related to approximately 1.582 acres, approximately 200 feet of frontage on Old Dixie Highway, and the claimant's name is Miller, you know his first name? Mr. Miller. And the second one is 4262 Old Dixie Road, also relating, and both of those for parcels 92 and parcels 67 and 68 in the amount of $500,000 total.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motions, there's a second.
Second.
Y'all went too quick on the second that time, were you?
I waited on you that time. I was just fast on the clock.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Good night, everyone. Good night, y'all.